A novels class and an intramurals class. And this schedule has really seemed to uplift our students. They're excited about coming to school. If you look at the 10th period, everybody in the school's on a 40-minute block. And that also has allowed us to make some, offer some different stuff. As you see, the rotation classes, once again, have arts side and we have novels. Anytime kids are reading, that's a good thing. We have technology, our 7th grade Spanish classes at that time. We have a journalism class, we have intramurals, we have math here, we have special ed support. And that's where our special ed kids are getting some extra help. We have special topics for science and social studies for the 7th and 8th grade. We have a special topics art class that Ms. Porter does a great job on. We have intramurals for 6th grade, because the other intramurals were 7th and 8th. We have 7th and 8th grade band. And that, that pretty much covers what we're doing. So what you're looking at in a 10-period schedule is you have, and the 1 and 2 are together, that's a 67-minute class, 3 and 4 is a 67-minute class, 5 and 6 is a 67-minute class, 7 and 8 for 8th grade is, 7th and 8th graders is a 60-minute class. And then you have 8th and 9th for 6th grades is a 60-minute class. And then you have three 40-minute classes worked in that.
Two per grade level.
Two per grade level, yes. It's like the 6th grade is in a 40-minute class, 7th period and 10th period. 7th and 8th is in a 40-minute class, 9th period and 10th period. And we have seen a really positive attitude about all this. And our kids just seem much more inclined to be at school and enjoy school. If you look at 10th period, that's the next sheet, the blue one. We had a real fun time doing all this, you can imagine. You can see that on Monday and Tuesday, you saw the same things that you saw on this schedule. It changes on Wednesday every week. Wednesday is club day. And if you glance, because clubs is something middle school kids need. And if you glance in the back at the purple sheet, you'll see that here are some of the clubs that we have going on. We have a sports history club, a walking club, a creative writing club, indoor beautification. We even have a ping-pong club. We have a computer game, educational game club. We have an ecology club, a drama club, outdoor beautification, that's Mr. Bell back there. Math games, dance fitness, history trivia, which goes along with the golden horseshoe, which we've won every year since I've been at Duval. A career club, and an educational board game club. We're looking at chess, we're looking to teach kids to think and reason. We also have a student council available to the students. And Ms. Mainland works with our student council group. So we started the year out by letting the students join one club. At the end of the first nine weeks, we'll go to Club B, so that they'll meet in one club two weeks a month, like on the 1st and 3rd. And the 2nd and 4th, they'll have the opportunity to join their second club, starting the second nine weeks. If you look at Thursday, every Thursday is our happy class. That is the Links program that we put in last year, and it, we call it happy time. And this is a class that addresses counseling issues like character values, cyberbullying. It also gives every student in grades 6 through 8, an adult mentor that advises them every year. The mentor moves with the kids, so they have the same mentor for three years. I said about the student council, we want our students to want to be at school. And we found that this club thing is, you know, a good step in teaching kids how to work with each other. The last thing in our innovative programs is our spirit days. And we just had our first spirit day. And it's designed four times a year, it goes on all year, but four times a year, we reward kids for responsible behavior. So Yvonne, what were some of the things that they did?
Seven times a year.
Seven times a year, my bad.
I know more about, we thought we worked on it together. But they did, what they have to do to qualify, they can't have any unexcused absences, they can't have more than one tardy, they can't have zeros in the class, they can't have any major discipline issues. And they have to have their agenda signed for their progress recorder report card. And then on spirit day, they got to go to the gym. They have a charity that they bring money for, this time it was St. Jude's. They have a silly game, like you do those silly games during homecoming. Then they have an intramural game. And then they got to listen to music and dance. So it was, it was about an hour and a half that they got to go and the rest of the kids got to sit in the study hall and contemplate why they didn't get to go.
All right. So do you all have any questions about the innovative programs?
On the club day, do you find attendance is better that day than any other day of the week? Have you checked that yet?
Our attendance is pretty good all the time, but the kids really enjoy these clubs.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, because we hadn't had that in the past. We were like trying to figure out how to let this work. And we don't really want clubs to meet, right now, they just are in one club, and they meet every week. And that's why, at the end of the nine weeks, we wanted to get them accustomed to doing that, then we're going to two clubs, because a lot of kids have interest in two different things.
Or some kids wanted to be in a specific club, and it was already filled up and they couldn't get in. So by having it as a second club option, we can give some of those new kids the opportunity to join that club, so that more people will be able to get the clubs they want.
And, you know, we have 7th and 8th grade band in that slot also. So our band has really come along. I just wish you could, we have one more home football game on the 15th against Polka. If we win that, we will be in the Black Diamond Conference Championship. So our band is planning on marching that night, so I invite all of you all up for the football game. Not to mention that we have a dandy little football team. They, they're very, very good.
How many members do you have in the band?
Oh, my gosh.
Just a problem.
I'd say probably around 40.
Forty?
Forty.
Maybe more. Some, you know, we spent last year, I waited on Jacob, it was well worth the wait, he's working really hard, he's doing a great job. But, you know, a year of no band director and us trying to get through with a sub, and our sub did a great job. But we lost a few people through that transition. But I, I really think that we're back on track and everything is good to go. And I think the band will continue to build. The support, the other day when we had our homecoming and our homecoming pep rally, it was amazing. The other kids were very supportive of our band and kids. And a matter of fact, we have football team members that are in the band, that they wore their football uniform, marched in the homecoming parade, in the band, got to the field, they had to be in the locker room at 10 till 6:00, and all of a sudden they come through the gate and I see them sprinting towards the locker room. And so it was, you know, it's really neat that there's a cohesiveness. All right. As far as the health and safety of our students, the education, the health and the safety of our students is our main priority. And we accomplish this several different ways. Obviously, the law protects instructional time. And so we have procedures in place to make sure that instructional time is not interrupted. The reference guide that's laying up front, that's the updated form that every, updated book that every teacher has. And it talks about the procedures and routines we have. And it gives specific instructions on how we operate and how we handle specific situations. In one section of it, it talks about fire drills. In one section of it, it talks about student checkout and pickup procedures, transition in the hallway. And one of the things that I walled with this year is, if you look in your folder, there's a red handout, it's called code red instructions. And certainly, obviously, you have to just turn on the news and know that we're all in danger. And, you know, we, we always, in the past, locked down, the kids huddled up, and it made them soft targets. And that, when we went through Alice training, we found out real fast that that was not the best way to handle a code red situation. So after a short opportunity for the teachers to come up with three words that were their key words in their code, I gave up and I came up with three words, because they had all kinds of different ideas. We couldn't get on the same page. And I was like, you've got to do this, so we're just going to do this. So as you can see, our code red procedures. When we call a code red lockdown, R1 means that they remain in the place they are. That means they lock their door, cover their glass, turn out their lights, pull the shades. The students don't go over and sit down, but they get in a ready position to receive other instructions. And at that point, they should be ready for step two. This week, we will be practicing our first code red drill. If I get on the intercom, or the secretaries do, and we call R2, the teachers know that means run, get out of the building. So I might say, PLC R2, and they know to take their kids out of the building. They know to run like a snake, they know to have their hands up, they know to get away from the premises. And if they're in that building, they're going to go up over by the greenhouse and up on the hill. Because the best chance of survival is to get out of the building. You can see there's some other things that we might say, 3rd and 4th grade wing, R2, our middle school students are going to come out of the other end of the building, they're going to go to the football field, you know. And that'll be done, because I have a camera in my office, the secretaries have a camera in there in the office. And our only concern at this point is, the main office of that building is an open target. And it needs one of those, like they have in the cafeteria, the metal things that come down and lock automatically with the fire code, because there's a glass window there. And if anybody gets in the front door, you know, the intercom's there. And that's certainly something that, you know, we need to address at some point, you know, to make sure that they're safe, because they're the ones that are going to tell the kids what to do, them and me. And you can see, it tells them where to go. And then, once they get to another place, then they're listening to the instructions of the teachers. We're able to see what's going on. So if we see somebody trying to get into a room, we might call, let's see, 3rd and 4th grade wing, R3. And that means they're going to try to barricade, they're going to resist, they're going to have their kids throwing books, all that stuff. Because in most school shootings, you have one perpetrator. Occasionally, you have two. And, you know, older kids can very easily disarm them. That's an awful thought, but the bottom line is, you have less fatalities when that happens. Most people that aren't experienced with guns are going to lean in the gun, in a door like this. And when they do that, you know, police officers go in like this, so somebody can't just knock it out of their hand. And we, you know, we want, it's going to be dark, there's probably going to be a table up on the end. And our teachers are training our older kids about what to do. Our younger kids, there's aides in some of those rooms, so there's some, some that have two adults. And of course, you know, it's, they're not in the same position to fight. But, you know, their safety is the most important thing to us. And we're willing to do what we need to do to protect the most kids. It's an awful thing to have to talk about, but it's reality in the world we live in today. All right. As far as other things that affect the health and safety of our students, we have high expectation for our students as far as behavior, respect, and working hard in class. And when those things don't happen, Ms. Brown and I address those issues. Our students have agendas that outline the rules. And when we have discipline issues, those are addressed quickly, and parents are involved in that early. Not always the most pleasant thing in the world, but that, you know, we call home and let the parents know what's going on. Jeff and I talked a little bit about other things that are affecting our school. And I've sat down and I've thought a lot about this, because this year, more so than ever, things have changed dramatically. The dynamics of the student population is changing, and educators are somewhat in uncharted waters in how to deal and meet the needs of these students. Shaun, please don't put anything in the paper related to special education, okay? Because I want to talk to the board about that. So I'd appreciate if you wouldn't be specific, okay?
Um, okay.
It's nothing, but I just, you know, I just want to talk to them, and I don't want a big headline about it in the paper. We have 544 students enrolled at Duval. Fifty-three of those students, or approximately 10%, qualifies homeless. I would think that that would surprise you. That is according to the definition of homeless in the McKinney-Vito Act. So we're dealing with different, a different perspective. We're giving out food for these kids to take home. We have a backpack program, every week we give out food. That's a really good thing. We have 144 special education students. That includes our speech students. It does not include our gifted students. Of that 150, 144, 89 of those are receiving special help in math and reading. We have resource rooms. This is something that our numbers have just jumped off the chart. Ms. Brown's going to talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. But probably the change and the biggest challenge to educator is trying to teach kids from PK to 2nd grade who've been, who've been born addicted to drugs, diagnosed as bipolar, they're ADD, they're ADHD, they're LD, they're BD, that are OHI, that have ODD. And these classifications have challenged educators.
Kim, do you have a percentage of drug babies?
No, no. And I would, because I don't know that that's the diagnosis, you know, I don't have any specific that says this child is that. But we certainly, our population has changed. These are all things I have dealt with in the last two weeks. And I asked Jeff today, I said, Jeff, is it like this every place? And he said, yes, but maybe not to the extent it is in Duval. Because, I mean, when you think about 544 kids and the numbers that we're dealing with in special education, I mean, that's huge. This week, of course, on a regular basis, we deal with kids not being able to sit still. One of my aides got spit on this week. The child had strep throat, throwing objects, yelling out in class, hurting themselves, hitting themselves till they bleed. Aggressive behavior towards their friends, their aides, and even me. In the past two weeks, I've dodged people taking their shoes off and throwing them at me, turning over chairs in my office. And when I say this is uncharted waters, we're not sure how to deal with this. And it is, some of these kids are in a regular classroom. So on a day-to-day basis, Ms. Brown and I, I mean, it's hard to have a plan day-to-day because we're dealing with this stuff that's coming up all the time. And this is what's happening everywhere, not just at Duval. Many of these students are in a regular classroom, which impacts the education of all students. And unfortunately, a lot of times, there's a lack of support from home, not because they don't care, but because of poverty, because of addiction, because of hopelessness, because of low intellectual ability, because of frustration, because they don't know how to deal with these issues either. You know, I'm old, and I probably won't be around for the long run of this. But I don't see this problem going away. This morning, one of my teachers was late for school. You know why she's late? Because a new shipment of heroin came into the Milton area and they had a road stop. So as long as these kind of drugs are out there, and people are having kids and using those drugs, we're going to have problems in the school system. So the question that I think about is, how are we going to get qualified teachers that have been trained, and Mr. Lindell has set up a training to help us, I mean, they've been very helpful to us, to teach these children? And how are we going to protect learning for our brightest students? Because, you know, right now, the way the system's set up, it's all-inclusive. Ms. Brown's going to talk to you a little bit about how we tried to meet these needs, scheduling, staffing. And I'm sure you know a little bit about staffing, because we're adding teachers right and left, and meeting these children's needs.
Well, Kim, let's touch on one thing you said there. It's hard for me to see how our test scores can come up with the kind of kids we're getting in their school system.
Well, remember, they don't all take the Smarter Balance Test. You have the ACTA test.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But they're still disrupting the classroom and hurting the students that could make good for them.
And every child can learn.
That's right.
I'm here to tell you, every child can learn, but every child learns different things.
But we've got a real large, we've got a drug problem in this country and...
Yes, we do, Greg.
I don't know the answer for it.
I don't know either. I've had a hard couple of weeks, and I, I wish I knew the answer. I'd feel a lot better if I knew the answer. Yvonne, you want to pick up?
Okay, she asked me to speak about the challenges that we've had with the special education class staffing. We had, Mr. Bradford was our special ed teacher for elementary. And last year, his numbers got so large that he was out of compliance because he had too many kids in his classroom. So we hired a second teacher to help share that load. And then during the school year last year, we realized that we were getting some new students who have autism. And we already had the one, they're kindergarten and first grade this year. And kids who have autism, they have very special needs of their own. And their very typical autistic behavior is very disruptive to other students, because they make a lot of noises, they scream out, they're, they stym, they move around a lot. So we realized that we were going to need a classroom for these children. So at the beginning of this year, we filled that position. In the meantime, our numbers continued to grow. And as we sit here tonight, both of our special ed teachers in elementary are out of compliance yet again, because they are over, as many as three students. We have put supervisory aides in with those teachers to help with that, but it's still out of compliance. So we have, are in the process now of hiring our third new special ed teacher in just over a year. So that's just how bad the numbers have gotten. What I realized when I looked at trying to schedule, once we get this new teacher, we were trying to do a breakdown, so that Ms. Burlock would have the K1 students, the new teacher would have the 2-3 students, and Mr. Bradford, Bradford would have 4 or 5 students. And then, once I got to looking at numbers, I realized that if we did that, the new teacher and Mr. Bradford would both already be out of compliance, because they would be over. So we looked at, tried to look at options of how we could get around that. And the two options that we came up with were to put some of the 2nd graders down with the K1, and move some of the 4th graders down with the 2-3. So they would have as many as 3 grade levels at one time for part of the day. That wouldn't be all day, but for at least part of that day. The other option would be to reduce the amount of time that the students are being serviced for reading language arts, which I don't think we want to do that, that would be as a last resort. So that's just to kind of illustrate just how quickly our numbers in special ed are growing, and some of the struggles that we're having trying to make sure that we're meeting these kids' needs in the special education classrooms. So, like I said, I lost my notes, but I think that was about all I had to talk about. So any questions?
This, the special ed ones, 3 grades, it's the same subject, though?
Yes, yes.
That would, that would help, but it's the same subject.
And I'd like, now I'd like to introduce Justine Lindbergh, our president.
First, I would like to start by thanking you guys for addressing our concerns last year that we had at Duval. The following projects are currently in process that we have already spoke about. The lights in the front of the building are scheduled to be wired. Our new digital sign is up, and it has electric brand to it. We're waiting on the software for installation, so that we can completely up and running. The arrangements have been made to have the old sign removed, so that we'll just use the digital sign from there on. The following projects have already been completed. The sewer system, that was one of our biggest complaints last year, and you guys have worked on that. So it seems to be functioning a little better, and we're receiving a lot fewer complaints than we had previously been getting. The broken blacktop around the back, our bus lane in the back of our school, has been replaced, and that looks wonderful. That makes things a lot smoother out back. The primary learning centers foundation has been secured against all the unwanted animals. The cats are completely removed from the premises. That is a big help. That takes a lot of our questions from our little kids down. And then the...
I need to know that.
Then the LSIC identified, we, we talked in our last meeting, and we had a few, few needs or wish lists, if you want to say, that, that we would like you guys to consider. And that's just our attendance boundaries. We would like you guys to set, that we had, we had mentioned. Because studies show that smaller classes traditionally have the better test scores. And that's something that we're striving for, is our test scores to be, you know, as high as we can get them. We want to give these kids the best potential they have. The lights on the playground, we, we have some signs and stuff that we've already received, but we were just wanting to get that extra lighting out there, so that we can, we can see what's going on at all times out there. Then the gravel on the playground, we would like to remove that and have side foot down. And that's pretty much all I had. Does anybody have any questions over there? Okay, back over to Ms. Lake.
You know, every decision we make at Duval, we want to do what's in the best interest of our students. And we certainly want to be positive, but we want to be truthful about some of the challenges we're facing in education, because it's going to impact our educational system for years to come. And, you know, it's, Ms. Brown, while we're talking, I said, it's overwhelming, it's exhausting, it's sad, you know? But we've got to do whatever we have to do to take care of kids. And that's always our first priority. And so hopefully, you know, we've addressed the issues. As far as facilities, we're in pretty good shape. I mean, we have, you know, things have been taken care of, Dana's worked real hard. We've, one thing I didn't say is we, we're building, putting a wall in a room to divide a room. And Jeff will concur that we are out of space at Duval. We have no place else to go. We have no storage. We divided another classroom to make room for our new special ed classroom. So we're growing, our numbers have remained pretty constant. And I think the area will continue to grow. But Yvonne, that kind of concludes what we're saying. I'm 15 minutes below that hour, Greg, and I'm sorry. I said, this is going to be 25 minutes, 30 minutes tops.
Yeah, but you haven't heard Mr. Priestley ask you any questions yet, either.
That's right.
Yeah, Mr. Priestley, you were so quiet, I thought you'd taken a little nap.
Making notes.
I think I should have known.
Well, I should have known. I'll hand-deliver your little pamphlet here. Do you have any questions for me, Steve?
Yes, is this proper time for you?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Priestley.
I had a couple of things, Carol. One, uh, Kim, one was the, the class times that you mentioned, where they were established class times of 67 minutes, and then at other times, 40 minutes. Is that for all grade levels or just certain grade levels?
That's just for your middle school, because your elementary time is set.
Okay.
I mean, it's like it always was. And we spend about hour and a half in reading, an hour in math. Sometime, is Emily, Loring, is an hour and a half?
Yeah.
Approximately, yeah.
It's for reading, each.
For reading, okay. Each, an hour and a half each, so. But elementary's set up like it always has been. The middle school was where we needed to make the adjustment.
Okay. I just wanted to ensure, as far as the, you know, whether maybe you had one block of time set, and then maybe had additional time later or whatever, but I understand the way you're doing it. Now, do you have certain class rates that are departmentalized, and what are they if you do?
You know, we did that last year in elementary. And our 5th grade is still departmentalized. Got two excellent teachers. Our, our English person from last year that had 56% proficiency is now our science and math teacher. And we got a new teacher that was top of her class at Marshall University. I thought you'd like that, Steve. And she is teaching English to 5th grade. That's the only classes in elementary that we have departmentalized. We did that with the 3rd grade last year, but concluded, as we looked at the personnel of the 3rd grade this year, that we needed to go back to both teachers teaching everything.
Now, what about middle school, are they, what are they?
They're departmentalized.
Okay, okay, I want to clarify that. Okay, the last question I had, we could, you made the... The last question I had, you made reference earlier to the cameras that you have in your school.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a base where you can see all of the cameras that are throughout the building? Can you see them all in one location and are they all visible to you at the same time?
We have sixteen cameras in our building. The stations where you can see all of them, my office, Ms. Brown's office, and the main office. And our only concern was the intercom is only in the main office. So if we need to, like, if I'm looking at the cameras and I'm going to evacuate a certain part of the building, the main office is a glass window. And so if there was anybody in the building, obviously, the secretaries wouldn't be protected. And in order to use the intercom, you have to stand up. It's up on top of a shelf.
Right. Well, I understand that and that sounds like that's something that you plan needs to be worked on for. But I just want to clarify that those sixteen cameras, those show activities throughout the whole school, like, can you see all of those, I guess in a kind of a miniature version at all times?
Yes.
What if you see one that interests you? What do you do?
What if I see one that interests me?
Yes. In other words, could you click on it and make it larger to see more detail or?
We can actually go back and it records. And a matter of fact, we had some kids that were in our school, a group was using our school. We came in and the camera was shot to the ceiling. And so Ms. Brown went back on the internet and clicked back and we saw exactly who was bothering it and contacted the parent. And so, you know, in several situations, and every part of the building's not covered, but in several situations, we can go back and look at tapes to, you know, if something happened. That situation, somebody pushed somebody across the hall, somebody pushed back and there was a big to-do about that. And Ms. Brown went back on the camera and looked at that and right there it was. It's always nice to be able, when parents come in and say, "Little Jesse wouldn't have done that", to say, "Well, we have it on video."
All right, it's good to have that evidence. Well, and I understand what you're saying there, but what I'm, I guess, asking about is that if I'm looking at, if I could see all sixteen of those cameras, the activities that each one of them shows, if I see a, like, well, let's say a bad case scenario of I see an intruder coming in under one of those particular camera pictures, can I click on that to make it big and see really what's going on closer?
Yes.
Okay. That's why, so do you have the capability then of monitoring all of, well, except like you say, maybe you need some other cameras, but you can monitor your whole school sitting in one location?
Right. But, you know, on a day-to-day monitoring, you know, we use, we use real people. Our teachers are in the hallways. We have supervision at all times.
I understand that, but I'm thinking maybe during class time where everybody's in there and they're gently working and everything and maybe something suspicious is noted by someone that's looking at a camera that they can click on there and say, "Hey, you know, what's going on here?"
Well, you know, the intercom only works out of the office and what we would do is if I saw something suspicious, I would immediately call a lockdown.
Right. Well, I understand that. It might not even be one such thing. I'm just saying if you saw something that looked unusual, that you could click on it and do more detail and maybe rather than the bad case scenario of it being an intruder coming in, maybe it's just, you know, the custodian went out that door and came back in or something like that, you know? So you'd know, well, that's not anything really to be concerned about.
Yeah, we had some people on the playground during school hours and so adults, one was swinging. And so I just went to the playground to address that.
Right. Well, you answered my question. I just wanted to see if you have the capability of seeing all these things in one location at the same time and you...
Yes, I have. That big TV behind my desk is not for Mount Air Football. It's for, it's for me watching what's going on as far as, you know, I can see throughout the school.
Right. Well, that's just another method. Like you say, ideally you want to do it with people on duty and supervising, but sometimes, you know, that's not always possible. Every way you could maybe detect other things. That's all I heard. I just want to thank you all for all you do over there. I know you do a good job and I'm proud of you and I commend everybody. Thanks to those of you that are able to come out tonight. I heard a couple of familiar names from my past over there and I know how capable and hardworking they are. And of course, you've got some new teachers there doing a great job. In particular, Mrs. Brumfield, I'll call her that, Emily, and I'm sure there are others, but since you mentioned her, I'd like to thank her for what she does do. But that's all I have. Thank you, Fred.
I'll follow up a question on the camera. If you have a camera that goes out, do you know it immediately?
Yes. And I call PK and say, PK's the security company, and say, "We need that camera fixed. They come right down to fix it."
Carol, are you got any questions?
No, but I'm really impressed with her. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Carol.
Well, Kim, I know what you're doing. Good job. I'm really...
I'm trying hard.
...in respect to this schedule and stuff. She helps. I think it'll work fine.
Well, I just think that sixty-seven minutes classes for middle school kids, you have to be an excellent, excellent, excellent teacher to keep kids interested for ninety minutes. And, you know, and it's not time to do homework and we wanted to make the change to see, you know, and everybody is much happier.
I think you'll see results from myself.
I hope so. I hope so.
Thank you all. Go ahead.
If I could, I'd like to make a comment. I've heard numerous students say about the schedule. I have not heard any negative responses about the changes in schedule. Ninety minutes is a long time to hold kids' attention. It's a long time to dwell on anything in class. And about forty-five minutes into it, we would start losing kids. And that's not happening so much now with the shorter class periods. And like she said, you know, usually about ten, fifteen minutes, forty in the class and we start on whatever assignment we've given. If they finish it, of course, you always have time to really send them to school and go on to do the homework. But the other big thing that kids are mentioning is that with the class and things like that, you know, for years we had preached that kids need to have some say in the scheduling. This allows them to have that opportunity and it allows them a little bit of freedom to do something that's actually fun and more enjoyable to come in and sit in the classroom too. So it's really been a positive change, I think.
I think that's very sound, too. Okay, well, thank you all a lot. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. You know, my next best favorite thing to redoing the schedule and getting everybody up in an uproar is moving furniture. And they run away from home when I start moving furniture, moving rooms and stuff, so I like to save these. Guys, y'all want to go home? And if she's not there, just come and see us tomorrow.
Okay, we'll move on from administrative matters. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion her a second.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Priestley, second. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item A, I'm a Mount West Community Technical College student, Lakin Dunlap, to perform required preschool observation at Duval PKA in Midway Elementary School first semester. By being a school volunteer who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item C, agreements with the following as supervisory aides for the 2015-2016 school year in accordance with provisions of West Virginia Code eighteen A dash five dash eight. And item D, 2015-16 stack development plan for our school service personnel to see attachment.
Does anyone have any questions on administrative matters? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Is there an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, finance, Bertie. Do I have a motion for the finance item?
Certainly.
Mr. Robertson?
Finance.
Madam, okay, Bertie?
Okay, item A, the invoice is totaling eight hundred and ten dollars and three hundred and ninety-three and six cents. And they're attached and invoices are available for public review at the county office.
You don't have the bad news?
Do you want me to talk about that?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Of course, I shared with you guys that from the governor and Shana, we forwarded on to you. So the governor, the announcement was a four percent cut for state agencies. And then there's actually a one percent for local boards of beds. So first thing this morning, we got our cut. So our cut for Lincoln County is two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's what we'll have to take out of our budget. And Jeff and I were discussing it. So this came from Jeff and I this morning. So I would expect the next email from him is to go in and adjust that budget and remove two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and resubmit our budget to them. So I would expect that within the next few days.
And that is between now and June the thirtieth?
Yes, yes. And of course, Steve was, you know, he said, "Well, I guess there goes our carryover balance." And so our carryover balance was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so, you know, pretty much just wiped that out. And of course, you guys saw some of these other counties, you know, taking some big hits. You know, I'm just not so sure this is the end of it.
I'm all in.
That's, the economy's fine.
The article in the Metro News this afternoon, it appears that it may be the first of several such events.
So we've, you know, Jeff and I've talked about it and, you know, we're just going to pretty much, you know, just get what you have to have. You know, our levy money, of course, you know, that's funded and that pretty much operates our system. And we went over the county budget. So in the county budget, it's almost just payroll. That's really, the general fund is just basically payroll. And I was just kind of going through and showing Jeff, you know, there's maybe a few extra dollars you can just really conserve in, you know, maybe custodial supplies or something like that, maybe a few extra dollars in transportation, but the general fund is payroll. We literally operate on excess levy. So luckily we have that to still operate on. So, you know, it's just another piece of bad news for our county, you know? We've dropped enrollment and of course, then now this, so...
Yeah, we're getting ready to officially submit our enrollment numbers and we'll know something soon in terms of what the final results are going to be, the loss of students from last year.
Then of course, the double whammy then here is, you know, Kim, you know, speaking at these children and there's all these federal mandates that you've got to do X, Y, and Z. So it, I mean, it's just kind of snowballing on things that's going to happen. So we just really, really, really have to be diligent on what we approve, you know, purchased process. Which I kind of got everybody on notice to not be spending anything, you know? Probably sent out a memo about a month ago, you know? Don't be spending your instructional levy money, you know, just in case we have to pull that back and use some of that here to the central office. So, but, you know, we've been really fortunate over, gosh, been here for twenty years. We've been able to shoot money out to the schools and give them, you know, a little bit of their own little pot of money to do with as they please. So this is the first year that it's really been tight even on that. So, you know, we talked before, everything just keeps going up and up and up. You know, I mean, this is immaterial, but, you know, I went to the grocery store and eggs, eighteen eggs is only five dollars. Well, I was going to have a heart attack. What the heck? So, you know, that's just an indication, you know, what we see in our personal life, same thing is happening here in, for the local board.
Anyone got any questions, Bertie?
We'll monitor closely what's going on. So at least we look forward to it as a concern. Because I accepted this coupled with our loss of enrollment. Have to stay on top of what's going on.
Okay, another question, a comment, so I'll ask for a vote on the finance item.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion on personnel?
I move.
Say it.
Okay, item A, employment short, long-term substitute professional personnel. B, if one of the curricular personnel. Item C is a type of, that should say retirements and resignations. You can catch up to these after we read these. So that, only three items from the last one we had. A huge personnel, what do I have to give you on? Yeah, and also I gave you a sheet with an update like I have been. We continue to post. We're still not finding qualified candidates. We had a gentleman in here, Bill Bright, yesterday stopped by for a minute. He was telling us in Lowkey County, how many was?
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight positions.
Positions in Lowkey County, they don't have field. So when we look at ours, we want all of them filled, but we're not at that office or nothing. We continue to post to try to get the most qualified people.
Any questions on personnel?
I just have one that's relating to that, Fred.
Go ahead.
Refresh my memory, Jeff or Bill, one or the other, about when is the due date that a teacher has to advise in order to, that they receive the bonus for retiring?
February the fifteenth. Bertie's choosing.
Yeah, I think it's either that or...
It's different for...
January.
Yeah, I think it's January.
January fifteenth.
It keeps changing. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Me too.
Do you think it's January the fifteenth?
It's in that timeframe.
We've sent that a letter for all employees to advise them.
All right, thanks.
Maybe we shouldn't send the letter out this year.
Lowkey County's going to go through, we maybe get some of their teachers.
Any other questions? I'll ask for a vote on the personnel item. Is that all yes?
Yes.
Okay, comments and concern? Anyone got any comments and concern?
Well, you got posted notes.
Carol, you received any comments or questions?
Hey, Larry, you sure he does? Have they posted notes?
No, he does, but they're not to be disguised. They're just...
You look over there when he's not looking to see what they say.
Kind of afraid to do that.
It could be dangerous.
If there's nothing else, then I'll ask for a host of the adjourned until October the twentieth at Midway Elementary.
I move.
I'll say. Steve Chen's a kid's baby.
An all yes?
Yes.